Starting the meeting at four thirty six. At the regular meeting minutes, June third, twenty twenty five. So discussion. All those in favor? Second item on the agenda is the tax serve capital service extension agreement for the tax collector service that she utilizes. And basically, it's just extending the existing agreement that we have with them. To May twenty six, twenty twenty six. There is, I don't think it's spelled out here. It's in her line item.
Is it a fixed cost on that?
Yeah. Yeah. All those in favor? You want the. What across the agreement? I think we should have an ending. Next thing is the post office and it's here for that, but you have, before we get started, some updates on that. Uh, post office. So when we first heard that it might be closing or moving. I reached out to Senator Blumenthal, Murphy, and Representative Hayes offices to see if they could help us with this. Because the local workers of postal office have not heard. Barely anything about details of what's happening. I have to say, uh, Jana Hayes office got back fairly quickly. Uh, Blumenthal did get back and offered to help and I think they did reach out to someone at the postal service. And, uh, I have spoken with Rhonda Cunningham. She's the manager of customer relations for the postal service. I gotta say, there wasn't much information forthcoming from her. She says that it's a temporary move. To Thomaston. Everyone will keep their same addresses, including the P O boxes. So you have to pick up your mail in Thomaston for your P O boxes. I've called the district manager's office twice today and gone right to voicemail with her separately. So communication has not been great with the USPS. I didn't expect. You know, everything's put back there anyways, so low expectation. I also have been in touch with the person in charge of looking for spots within Morris to put the post office. They're looking for appropriate locations in the town. Imagine they have the commercial. Uh, there's certain enough sites they're looking for, a number of parking spaces they're looking for. Uh, it can be an existing structure or a vacant lot at this point. They'll put in modular building. And, uh, create the space they need on a vacant lot. I'm still a little skeptical. I think they're just looking to close this post office. I don't know if it's all just a show to look like they're trying to do something and give up. Uh, the come up customer relations person told me that the current leaseholder didn't want to renew the lease. And I said, no, that's not true. He does want to renew the lease, but not on the terms you're offering. He's trying to make it equitable, you know, make it fair for him as well as postal service. And they don't want to renew those. Uh, so that's where I'm at.
Yeah. Thank you for that update. I'm here because it seems to be so god darn hard to get the information. And I am a customer of the postal office. One little thing that we we can work better. I did go over to the postal office. Uh, there's a letter in the window. And I found out about that on Facebook a couple of days. So Sunday I went over to take a picture. Just a little bit tongue in cheek. I want to make sure everybody understands this. I did walk to the post office. I I did stand on that little concrete step there. I did take a picture. I didn't touch the door. I didn't try and get in there. I'm saying all this because I'm sure the whole place does. I don't know. Have you all seen the letter? Read the letter? Very interesting letter. Uh, well, it starts off by saying a temporary closure of the Morris postal office. I don't think it's a temporary closure. Are we temporary for a few days? Are we temporary and really looking over something? Are we temporary like after from Washington DC in? Three years, five years, ten years, and nothing's going to happen. But but the temporary closure is a kind of interesting term because the post office has a full closure process that they have to go through. It's a very long process. I was able to get this, um, all kinds of Google search, all kinds of steps that you have to go through in turn, including a public comment. But that's for closure. It says on the bottom, emergency suspensions. The USPS may also separate emergency. Has a separate emergency suspension process that allows for immediate cessation of service in specific circumstances such as lease cancellations. It says lease cancellation. Now, we're in this letter here. Um, it it it's going to be suspended because the lease expired. Well, every lease that I've ever seen, every known expires. Um, so that that's not very informative to tell me the lease expired. And what happens when the lease expires? Sit down and you don't see the knowing. And you've already talked about that. You've already talked about the post office is saying one thing and the person who is the owner over there is saying a different thing. I find that really, really discouraging. And and I agree with you. It sounds like they're trying to get around the fast one. They're saying that he won't renew the lease. Um, and and therefore they're going to close the post office. That that seems to be really a good bit unfair to us here in Morris. Then as he, as the letter goes on, it talks about moving down the custom. It says customers who currently hold a post office box will be able to receive their mail daily at the Thomaston Post Office and we give the address for the post office. Now, now let me use the historical society as an example because, uh, one of the addresses we have is is box two, three, four, Morris, Connecticut. It's a mailbox. Now, it sounds like we're going to be able to go down there and get mail that is addressed to box two, three, four, Morris, Connecticut. Now, does that mean we have to do it daily or they'll have it available on a daily basis as we go down? Uh, what are they gonna do? A separate little place here? We're going to keep, I mean, there's a lot of mailbox going. Are they going to separate place here? Now, it goes on to say we can go to another post office and and rent their mailbox. I suppose you lost that. There's a lot of things you can do to kind of get around that. But again, it's an example of a letter that in my opinion is is not terribly informative for all the words that they have in there. Um, so so I I would wonder about that that ability. Now, it gets more interesting. This one is amazing. It says here that. If applicable, post office box refunds can be recert received at the Fort Howard post office. The the word there is receive. That's makes it sound to me like I go to Fort Howard and I tell them who I am and I receive, uh, the money that would be due to the Morris Historical Society. Well, maybe somebody knows better than I do, but I never heard of Fort Howard, Connecticut. So I went on and did a little Google search. Fort Howard is located in Fort Howard, Maryland. Fort Howard, Maryland is approximately two hundred eighty-six miles from the little town of Morris. Well, I looked up at the post office. I'm not making this up. Here's what it says on the phone. This office has closed permanent. Please check nearby locations below. So I guess they want me to drive two hundred eighty-six miles one way to go to a post office that's closed to get money that that would be due us for the Morris Historical.
Well, they'll forward your request for you. They'll forward your request.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Now, that's, that's on the second, on the second.
They are, uh, doing the re, they are doing reimbursements at the post office. Their their process. Just letting you know that they are doing that.
Okay. The letter says on the door, and and the reason I say that, this, I I probably wasn't able to say it's a half-assed opening. Um, we we at one point in time, we had as many as four as four post offices. Now, we don't need that. Then we had two and and we lost one of them. We lost Lakeside. Now, my memory is when that happened, boys, Lakeside made a real statement. There there was a real concern about that. I think I'm right in common sense in saying that the Lakeside zip code remain. So Morris now has one post office with two zip codes. Now, if you say that the addresses are going to remain the same, then one would presume, uh, that the the, uh, let's call it the Lakeside zip code will still be an operating zip code. But sure, that's what I'm saying. The operative word is presume.
Yeah.
And and it seems to me that that we ought to get some time here for a little better than, uh, presume. Now, now the letter tells me. Took a nice picture, but I can't read it. Yeah. It says, uh, let's see, the lease will expire on August thirty-one. They're going to close on Friday, August eighth. So that would mean on August ninth, we've got to be doing something different. Now, it sounds to me like the mailbox area in front of our house where the address that we have is still going to work. That's what it sounds like. It sounds like with the box that it's still going to work down in Thomaston. Can't quite believe that, but that's what it sounds like. Uh, it it's now, and this letters is signed by John Howell, manager, post office operations. And of course, there's no address on it. Um, it it would seem to me that that it would be a good idea. For this board of selectmen to set up a meeting with John Howell. So we can get answers to what's going on. We don't have to sit around and think that this is what's going to happen. Uh, I I suppose an answer back to me, well, why don't you do that? Why don't you write him a letter? Well, I can. Uh, but it would seem to me that it would have a little more emphasis if it came from the board of selectmen because there was a sense that Morris is concerned about this, not just in Morris. Uh, so so I guess my message is this, this is a joke. It's a joke. And and they get around closure by saying it's going to be temporarily suspended. They say it's temporarily suspended because the lease isn't going to be. And and it doesn't sound, that doesn't sound correct. It sounds like there is a willingness to renew the lease, but they're not going to renew it some kind of a, um, price that would push it back for a long time. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Well, I did speak to the post office. Against the, well, I spoke to the post office about two weeks ago. Okay. But I received a letter in my mailbox. My P O box. And I asked them, what should I do? Said, well, I guess they have a real estate company that looks into properties around Morris. And there is one that they're looking at. But there was no definite. What to do. So I said, what should, he said, wait till the middle of July. And my options were if they don't find a place, to either go to Thomaston or Vienna. And that's where he left them. So I'm assuming if I put a mailbox out in front of my house, they'll deliver mail to my house. Because I had the same thing. My address is one fifty-six Benton Road, but P O box ninety-two. So. So I said, I'll wait till the middle of July and hopefully somebody will have an answer of what what they're doing. But I kind of got the indication that they're just looking to close the post office.
Well, that seems unfair. We'll wait till the middle of March. It's not. Number two, if they do close, I got the steps here. A whole bunch of steps they've got to go. It sounds to me like they're probably going to have no interest in those steps because they'll say because they couldn't do those. Now we're just going to close about. And and again, when when I use the historical society, the address for the historical society was box two, three, four, Morris, Connecticut. We we don't have a mailbox out there. So so that's the way we can get the mail from the historical society. We don't get very much mail, but when we do, it's pretty important. Yeah. And so I. Now, I I think the lease has been working. It's been working on a way around that of getting some mail forward. But can can you forward mail indefinitely? Who knows? I don't know.
They told me six months.
Yeah. But but so so the post office closed for seven months.
And they have a trust.
And you know, here here's one of the problems. Because we've been spoilt by having a post office here. So we really. Uh, they they really help us out, work with the state laws. We're going to go down to Thomaston. They're not going to know it. They're not. So if it comes in box, uh, I don't know, one twenty-one, South Street, Morris, Connecticut, I'll bring you going to deliver. Now, when it was out of there, it certainly would have been, but I know, I know that. Uh, and and so I I guess part of my problem is that maybe, uh, maybe I, maybe I'm expecting too much. Maybe I'm too used to a wonderful post office.
Well, we'd like to at least have clear communication so we knew what to dispute or fight or accept. And we don't have that. So that's our first step, which it sounds, with your phone calls, that you're trying to get something. And say you owe us more than a letter that is completely vague and nondescript so that we know what to anticipate within a month. Because within a month, we have options of changing addresses and contacting billers and God knows what, but we owe, we are owed that notice. Did she, when you spoke to her, you also said she used the word temporary. We we don't know what that means.
Yeah, that's another question now of what is temporary?
What is that? Right. Okay. And I, in all of this, my understanding is we also have a. Post, um, that's retiring. So is that?
Is not being replaced.
Right. Is that also feeding into that? Yeah.
Well, we'll keep investigating, contacting at times.
That the address is going to stay the same. But my address will still be the same.
I'm just repeating what they told me.
Now, mentioned this day before, when we first moved to Morris, our mailing address was RFD two Bethlehem, Connecticut. That was our mailing. It'll change. Apparently, it's not going to change now, but boy, I'd love to see someone put that in writing. Particularly when you get, look a letter like that, it's.
So I'll stay in contact with Blumenthal's office, Jana Hayes. I've never heard back from Murphy, so I don't expect to at this point. And keep contacting the postal service to. Generate hopefully a meeting.
How about this, uh? John Howell, now we're trying to get touch with him.
Uh, didn't have his contact. I reached out to customer relations to start with, who put me onto the district manager. So that's where I'm working right now. Anything else? Uh, next is speed limit at Co Road. Uh, we just re-milled in, uh, paved Co Road and Brad Row stopped by or called. He'd like to see the speed limit reduced down to fifteen on that road. Uh, it goes a, it's going too fast now with a pavement that'll go faster. I think we tried doing this on Shawn Meadow a couple of years ago, and I think we were told by the state they wouldn't go down to fifteen on improved road. But, uh. See, whatever you think, I mean, we can reach out to the state, see if they reduce it.
We can reach out to the state, but who's going to enforce it?
Right.
It's like anything else. You can put a speed sign out there. I mean. Nobody's going to enforce it.
Uh, I'll reach out, see if it's feasible, yeah. I I think the thought is, you know, say it's twenty now, people are doing thirty. If you put the fifteen, maybe they'll only do twenty-five, but, you know, I don't think that's going to be the case.
I think that's logical, but agree fifteen is a. Nothing's fifteen.
Right.
Only the loose gravel right now is fifteen, so.
Yeah.
But it would be nice that it's the lowest that we can because that is a, to me, how it works.
Yeah.
That you're only in ten over the posted.
And while we're on the talk, uh. Talking about speed limits, they did have some. Inquiries about speed cameras. As as you know, the, uh, Washington put in two cameras so far. They're going to do a third article in the paper. They're generating funds. But then you go online, you see a little bit of backlash there. You see that a school bus went through. Uh, and got nailed to forty-nine or something, miles an hour into thirty-five. Well, school bus, school bus happened to have a GPS. GPS said, no, it wasn't doing forty-nine. It was doing like thirty-eight or something. So to me, that would throw out all those tickets that were put out there by the speed camera until they can actually know if it's calibrated properly. And I know Litchfield just went through a presentation about the speed cameras and I don't think it was very well received from what I read, uh, BZ. And from what I've heard from other people. So myself, I'm not really ready to move forward with that, uh, until we see how it works more. If they can fix the problems or anything like that. Uh, and I think it, you have to add personnel as well to go through this speed limit process though. Now, perhaps the position we get paid for by the fines you put out there, but again, I think there's a lot more research to be done. And I know they do it on severe understand. I know they, I talked to some, uh, people down in Penny Farthing. Obviously, they're from Britain. And they say over there, they're extremely well posted before you get to the speed cameras. So you know they're there. They don't feel these are very well posted.
They're posted because I.
When you get there.
When you get there. And because I go, I travel down that way once a week. I do a food recipe at North Pole Market. And they put that on a street. Straight away.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're not paying attention and see that sign, you're going to get.
Downhill.
Yeah, yeah. And I don't have GPS in my, I don't think I have it. I may have it on my phone, but I don't know if I could go back and track to see if I really was speeding. You know, when I had the company vehicle, I could do that because it was in there. But what about the, the normal person doesn't have?
Yeah. They can't contest it.
Yeah. And it's a fifty dollar fine, but I don't think it goes against your license. No points, no points.
And not against your insurance, possibly, unless they find out.
Someone in the town is doing all this. Processing the tickets.
I, they have resident, at least one resident trooper down there. I wonder, I'm guessing it goes through their office. They did nally, I guess you would call it, that, uh, school bus one. But to me, that I would, if I was someone who got a ticket. Yeah. Even previous or after that, I would go and say, hold it. Where's the calibration? So, and there's two down there. There's one on, uh, one oh nine. The other one's on, I think it's old Litchfield Road. It goes up to Wickham Road. Well, that's the speed limit. Uh. Correspondence, I just kind of have a bit of an update. Uh, I just mentioned Co Road was milled, milled and paved. Uh, Highway Department's been very busy. Uh, chip sealing, they did Elaine White, Burgess, Cavali Hill, Canyon and Smokey Hollow roads. I think they're going to fog seal those as well in the near future, which. The process that really binds the stone to the surface better, works quite well. We did that, I believe, on one road around here. I think it was on Curtis Hill Road. Uh, I'm Ivan Shawn Meadow. Generator Eldridge is being installed. Frank, currently, the electricians are there replacing the transfer station, uh, switches. The, uh. Uh, propane tank just arrived today. It was loaded by Pinoko. That's all getting paid through ARPA. We are replacing the phone system in the town hall. Current one is, you know, twenty-five, thirty years old, uh, state of the art at the time, but they don't support it anymore. Fortunately, we work with a local contractor that works on phone systems and he was able to get at least one of our lines going again. And I think we have to find another phone, which just isn't worth it at this point. So we're going with voiceover internet. And, uh, we're trying to get our internet company to extend their service to all the locations that we have in town, the five locations for town of Morris. And, uh, so we'll have voiceover internet phone system throughout the town. And it's a lot different than what we have now. We actually have power ID. It'd be nice. The, uh, highway department's going to start working on replacing the south retaining wall of the transfer station. Tear down almost the entire wall and replace it with new blocks that have been on site for a while. And fix all the drainage issues behind the wall and, uh. Put down new concrete pads and re-asphalt up town. Uh, Lieutenant Governor Susan Bysiewitz called today. I called her back. It was quite nice. I called her back on her personal cell, which is. She gives it out at meetings. She goes, call me. She actually answered the phone herself, too. That was nice. Uh, they've been going around the state doing the Korean War and Veteran War ceremonies in every town. And they've done all the towns around us. They'd like to do Morris. So we're just going to have to compile the name, the names of all those who served during certain time periods, uh, for those wars or conflicts. And, uh, see who's still living and get them all invited to the ceremony. Imagine we'll do it over at the, uh, Memorial Park. Perfect setting for it. And I'm hoping we can get that done maybe in September or something like that. So that was really nice of her to reach out with that. And to answer her phone, unlike the United States Postal Service. Uh, and speaking of, you know, some of the complaints as far as speeding, uh, receiving a lot of complaints about the detour, uh, the traffic on the back roads. Commercial traffic on the back roads, speeding. Uh, not a lot we can do. I reached out to Trupel. I, uh, I said, please get some police. Drive-throughs by the police in those areas so people are aware. Hopefully, they could do a little, uh, you know, speed enforcement as well. Uh, I was asked to cut off commercial traffic on some of the roads and I said, well, that won't work. Your electrician or your plumber or whoever won't be able to get to your house then. If there's no commercial traffic, those are all commercial vehicles. Uh, hopefully, as time goes on, the track or trail trucks will learn they can't make that bridge off of West Morris Road on the side of it. It's just a nightmare there. Uh, also. Blight issues. Uh, people are really getting concerned about some properties in town. I've spoken with Tony about this and unregistered motor vehicleers. Uh, and I talked to Tony about this and I'm going to reach out to planning zoning to see why they increase the number of unregistered motor vehicles that could be in sight on a property from one to two. Uh, I think that's going in the wrong direction. I can see one. But two, you're starting to get into an issue, I believe. And they shouldn't have them. You can have as many as you want as long as they can't be seen or recovered out of sight. But there's a number of properties that we have not too far from here. It looks horrible, but we don't. I've had a complaint there for a year. And, uh. And I learned that you have to have your complaints in writing on the complaint. I said, well. A lot of people are not willing to do that. It's neighbors. So. Why do we have to do that? Like the building inspector goes out, he sees an issue. He sees an addition going on in a building or something like that without a permit. He doesn't wait for a complaint from the neighborhood. He goes out and tackles. The assessor does the same thing. She sees something. She'll go out and take care of it. And this Tony's working under the planning zone commission. He's doing what he's told. But this is why it's got to go back to the planning zone. It's like, he needs to have the freedom not to drive around town with a pointer on. He needs to be able to see stuff and tackle as he sees it. Uh, I'll, I'll be happy to take the things from residents and write out a complaint for myself based on their complaint and submit it to your board, but I think the process should change. And also noise complaints, there's a lot of, uh, uh, over in the valley with the, uh, gravel mines over in, uh, Lakeside. So there's a lot going on. That was part of it. Is that right? All quiet. He's small.
Well, speeding goes on.
Yes.
I I sit on my old horse every night. I just watch it go by. Now with the warm weather with the motorcycles and stuff, it's kind of the worst part of it.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't know. Yeah, I was down at the park. Yeah, I was down at the pasture past weekend, I think it was, and the noise because of the intersection there and people taking off and how it's not just motorcycles, it's cars, it's trucks, it's everything. We can keep complaining about that. Public comment?
Anything about the roundabout here?
No, they're, they're supposed to be getting a design out to us match up with our last meeting that we had with them. With the ideas, because, you know, they took the input from Skelton's as far as their property. So we're waiting on that. It's going to be a process, I'm sure. I mean, Goshen's been waiting for their updated rotary for quite a while. We might beat them. I don't know.
It'll be two or three years anyway.
I think so. And see if there's any money in two or three years. It's a very expensive project.
You mentioned Korean War. I would hope that there would be some mention that the Harlan's still fell from our town. It's still. I've, I've got it right on my all four of them.
Yeah, I'm going to gather everything I can get and get it out to the Lieutenant Governor. I guess they have a very, people are really pleased with the ceremony that they do. Get it done. Maybe it might be a good time to dedicate all the benches in Memorial Park that we purchased. We'll have out there for those who perished. Anything else? Anyone online? Okay, it is, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you. And very important, Connecticut State Police Troop Bell, they're hosting a school supply drive. And fortunately, the resident trooper up in Kent, Vicki Denno. She's very active in these toy drives, school supply drives, great person. If you ever get to meet her, she's kind of bringing this all together. So at the transfer station, there'll be a box from July 1st to August 4th. And they're looking for backpacks, lunch boxes, colored paper, pens and pencils, brands and markers. Pens and markers, glue and tape, folders and binders, scissors, calculators, water bottles and more. So we're going to try to get this promoted on our website and on the Facebook page and get the word out there. People can drop off. Is it just going to be the transfer station?
And the town hall.
The town hall.
Two boxes.
Yep. So that'll be nice. There's a lot of kids that don't have everything they need to get to school. And there's only so much at the school that we buy as well. So we'll get that out there for everybody. Is there a motion to adjourn at 5:09? All in favor?